Good evening and welcome to St Luke's for the fourth session of our Bible study on James, A Study of Faith in Action According to St James. Shall we pray? Father God, we thank you for your word to us, that every day is a living word and relevant to our lives. We pray now, as we study James's letter, that you will speak into our hearts, show us the things we need to understand and help us to carry forward with a response that brings glory and honour to your name. We pray that you will anoint George as he leads us in this study and each one of us with your Holy Spirit, that we might receive all the blessings that you have for us and be enabled to go out into the world and share those blessings with others. We pray, come Holy Spirit, come. Amen. Marie's going to start by reading our first couple of passages from James's letter. Thank you, Marie.
So we begin tonight with two passages from the book of James. We're going to start with chapter one, verses 22 to 27, and then move on to chapter two, verses 14 to 25. But be doers of the word and not merely hearers who deceive themselves; for if any are hearers of the word and not doers, they are like those who look at themselves in a mirror; for they look at themselves and then, on going away, immediately forget what they were like. But those who look into the perfect law, the law of liberty, and persevere, being not hearers who forget, but doers who act, they will be blessed in their doing. If any think they are religious and do not bridle their tongues but deceive their hearts, their religion is worthless. Religion that is pure and undefiled before God the Father is this: to care for orphans and widows in their distress and keep oneself unstained by the world. Now we move to chapter two, verses 14 to 25. What good is it, my brothers and sisters, if you say you have faith but do not have works? Can faith save you? If a brother or sister is naked and lacks daily food and one of you says to them, 'Go in peace, keep warm and eat your fill', and yet you do not supply their bodily needs, what is the good of that? So faith by itself, if it has no works, is dead. But someone will say, 'You have faith and I have works; show me your faith without works, and I by my works will show you my faith.' You believe that God is one, you do well; even the demons believe and shudder. Do you want to be shown, you senseless person, that faith without works is barren? Was not our ancestor Abraham justified by works when he offered his son Isaac on the altar? You see, that faith was active along with his works and faith was brought to completion by the works. Thus the scripture was fulfilled that says, 'Abraham believed God, and it was reckoned to him as righteousness; and he was called a friend of God.' You see that a person is justified by works and not by faith alone. Likewise, was not Rahab the prostitute also justified by works when she welcomed the messengers and sent them out by another road? This is the word of the Lord. Thanks be to God.
George will now lead us in our study. Thank you, Marie.
Well, the title of our study today is Faith on the Move. And of course, as you know from reading the scriptures in preparation for the study, the great debate that's going on is all about faith and works. And so I want us to address this in maybe a slightly different way this evening because I want to try and apply it to the church in a modern age in which we live. And so James's study about faith and action would be a timely message for today's church. And as we had from Marie's reading from James one, we are reminded that we must be doers of the word and not hearers only. We all live in an age when the problems of the world come to us through mass media and making us aware of situations throughout the world just as they are happening. At one time, something happening in the other side of the world, it would have taken months for that message to get through to this country. But nowadays, you can see it just as it's happening immediately. And so you and I, people of faith, are challenged by what we see and read. And if you're like me, it's so easy perhaps to say, 'Well, what can I do?' Or to have a deep concern for world events but remaining uninvolved. You will remember the parable of the good Samaritan and how the man fell among thieves on the road from Jerusalem to Jericho. You remember the Levite went by on the other side, the priests went by, and so on. And it's so easy actually to witness something but in essence to go by on the other side. And so at worst, we can become a nation of spectators, watching others, sympathising with them, but doing nothing about the issues confronting us. Years ago, someone said these words, which are so true, 'Evil triumphs when good men do nothing.' So in this study, this afternoon, we are challenged to put our faith into action. In so doing, there are certain truths that we all need to embrace. And to help us understand this in a simple way, I've put it under four headings, all beginning with the letter B. The first one is Belonging. In James, chapter two, in verse 14, he says, 'My brothers and sisters.' And you will have noticed, if you have read this letter through, that throughout this letter, James stresses again and again the relationship we share as members of God's family. If you look up chapter one, verse two, chapter two, verse one, and verse 14, chapter three, verse one, chapter four, verse 11, chapter five, verse 19, you will see again this continuous emphasis on brothers and sisters. And we are reminded here that we are members of the family of God and in a spiritual relationship with each other. The church consists of believing people who work together in today's world. Of course, although this is true, we also know that history is littered with testimony of individuals who have accomplished great things for God. And they remind us of our own personal potential in Christ. One such person that had a tremendous impact on my life was Gladys Aylward. When I was quite a young man, she came to the north of Ireland, to Ballamina, and she spoke there in the town hall. And you could not see a more diminutive little lady. And yet, that little lady accomplished great things for God. And so there's no doubt that individuals down through the ages have accomplished great things for God. But it is difficult, I think, to see how faithful witness in its entirety can be developed if members of Christ's body, the church, always act as individuals. We need each other, committed to each other in a fellowship of love. At one time in my ministry, it was my privilege to go to York and to work for a short time with David Watson, who at that time was a very, very well-known clergyman in the Church of England. And I was working at that time in Ireland. But when I was there, he told a story which has remained with me. He went to John Wimber's church in America called the Vineyard Church. And while he was there at the morning worship, which was a very informal situation, the leader of the worship looked at the congregation and said, 'Now, it would be a good idea if you looked at the person sitting next to you or standing next to you and said to them, 'I love you and I need you.' And David Watson said, when he looked at the person that was standing next to him, it was a tall, beautiful woman. And he said, 'My English reserve would not permit me to say those words.' And yet, of course, the words are true. We all need to love each other and there is a very real sense in which we need each other. And this truth that we need each other means that we are to a certain extent dependent upon each other. The church is a family. Where believing people are in truth, brothers and sisters in Christ, and there is no closer bond than family. And this can be destroyed when people tread the path of isolationism. Our combined gifts strengthen our witness, making it more effective. And just to underline this, Vicky is going to come now and read to us from 1 Corinthians, chapter 12.
1 Corinthians, chapter 12, and beginning at verse 12. For just as the body is one and has many members, and all the members of the body, though many, are one body, so it is with Christ; for in the one Spirit we were all baptized into one body, Jews and Greeks, slaves, all free; and we were all made to drink of one Spirit. Indeed, the body does not consist of one member, but of many. If the foot would say, 'Because I am not a hand, I do not belong to the body', that would make it, would not make it any less a part of the body; and if the ear would say, 'Because I am not an eye, I do not belong to the body', that would not make it any less a part of the body. If the whole body were an eye, where would the hearing be? And if the whole body were the hearing, where would the sense of smell be? But as it is, God arranged the members in the body, each one of them as he chose. If we were a single member, where would the body be? As it is, there are many members, yet one body. The eye cannot say to the hand, 'I have no need of you', nor again the head to the feet, 'I have no need of you'. On the contrary, the members of the body that seem to be weaker are indispensable; and those members of the body that we think less honourable, we clothe with greater honour; and our less respectable members are treated with greater respect, whereas our more respectable members do not need this. For God has so arranged the body, giving the greater honour to the inferior member, that there may be no dissension within the body, but the members may have the same care for one another. If one member suffers, all suffer together with it; if one member is honoured, all rejoice together with it. Now you are the body of Christ and individually members of it; and God appointed to the church first apostles, second prophets, third teachers, then deeds of power, then gifts of healing, forms of assistance, forms of leadership, various kinds of tongues. Are all apostles? Are all prophets? Are all teachers? Do all work miracles? Do all possess gifts of healing? Do all speak in tongues? Do all interpret? But strive for the greater gifts, and I will show you a still more excellent way. This is the word of the Lord. Thanks be to God.
That's one of various passages in the New Testament where Paul emphasises the fact that we are all members of the one body, we all have gifts, and we all work together in harmony and our gifts complement one another. And that is what brings about our witness in all its effectiveness. So belonging. And perhaps, before we move on, maybe just a thought that we can all consider. How has God gifted you? So we move on then from belonging, where James reminds us that we are brothers and sisters in Christ, to behaving in verse 15. If a brother or sister is naked and lacks daily food and one of you says to them, 'Go in peace and keep warm and eat your fill', and yet you do not supply their bodily needs, what is the good of that? At some point, you may like when you go home to look up Matthew, chapter 25, verses 31 to the end, where we find these words. Then the king will say to them at his right hand, 'Come you, that are blessed by my father; I was hungry and you gave me food; I was thirsty and you gave me something to drink; I was a stranger and you welcomed me; I was naked and you gave me clothing; I was sick and you took care of me; I was imprisoned and you visited me.' Then the righteous will answer him, 'Lord, when was it that we saw you? Truly I tell you, just as you did it to one of the least of these who are members of my family, you did it to me.' And here we can see that the criterion for judgement is our actions. What has been done in this life in relation to the needs of our fellow men? The early Christians were known, as we all know, for their compassion and their good deeds. And so we too must demonstrate our faith by helping others in a practical and tangible way. It is said of those early Christians, 'See how these Christians love one another.' In all honesty, I wonder how would that be said of the church today? We're told that Jesus went about doing good and healing all manner of diseases. And just as the Christians were known for their love and their action, so for all of us, it's always within our means to do something to help the needy. In the course of my ministerial life, I've met people who have provided hospitality, often at great cost to themselves. I've met people who looked after children to give a harassed mother a break. I've met people who regularly took an elderly person a meal. I met others who would go and would take an underprivileged person out for a meal as a treat. Others just helped lonely people. But there is something that we all can do. And then, of course, there are the larger issues that confront the church: immigration, housing, education, etc. These greater issues need more than an individual, they need a body to make a witness and a voice heard. Can we pray today, 'Make me, Lord, a channel of your blessing'? A little poem that I was confronted with some time ago left me with a great challenge. It goes like this: 'I was hungry and you formed a humanities club and discussed my hunger; I was imprisoned and you crept off quietly to your church and prayed for my release; I was naked and in your mind you debated the morality of my appearance; I was sick and you knelt and thanked God for your health; I was homeless and you preached to me the spiritual shelter of the love of God; I was lonely and you left me alone to pray for me; you seem so holy, so close to God, but I'm still hungry, lonely and cold.' And surely, that's the issue that James is addressing in this particular part of his letter. So we've looked at belonging and we've looked at behaving, but now we're going to turn to verse 19 and look at believing. You believe that God is one and you do well; even the demons believe and shudder. And the implication is it doesn't affect their behaviour. But in a very real sense, what we believe determines how we live. When I was a young boy, growing up in the north of Ireland, we had a large kitchen and in that kitchen, there was a range. And I remember it because it was a black range and it had lovely brass knobs. And my mother used to clean that range religiously every week. She cleaned it with zebo. Do you remember zebo? Yeah. And her hands were, they didn't have the protective things that you have now in your hands, you know, and your hands were as black as the day's lume. And but whenever I was a boy, I always had this temptation that I wanted to touch these brass knobs because they were sort of so shiny. I mean, she used to go to town on them with a brasso. She used to say to me, 'Don't touch those knobs.' Until one day, when her back was turned, I decided I would. And didn't I get a shock? They were red hot. So then I knew why mum was saying, 'Don't touch those knobs.' And from then on, what did I believe? I believed, and if I touched those knobs, my hands were going to get burnt, so I didn't do it. So there is a very real sense in which what we believe affects to a large extent how we live. But when it comes to the church and it comes to what we believe about God, I don't know how you see these things, but I'm going to share this with you anyway. You may agree with me, you may not, but that's, the whole idea of the study is not that we should all agree with each other. But you see, people can recite the Christian creeds and they can accept each tenet. But if it doesn't impact upon their life, what good is it? Belief, that is merely cerebral, that is of the mind, and doesn't touch the heart, what good is that? Sunday by Sunday, when we meet for worship, we say, 'I believe.' But then we must ask ourselves the question, in whom do we believe and what do we believe? James emphasises that the Christians should not merely hold to the great doctrines of the faith, they must practise these doctrines in their everyday life. And I think the challenge he lays before us is this challenge to consider whether our belief is head only or whether it is head and heart. So lastly, coming now to the end of our study, the fourth thought is becoming. Now, looking at verses 21 to 24, we have here two people to consider. The first one is Abraham. And if you want to read about Abraham and the particular example that James is referring to, well, you can do that in Genesis, chapter 22. But Abraham's example was a changed life and obedience to God's will. His life was a perfect example of faith and works. And then in verse 25, we have the example of Rahab. And then in verse 25, we have the example of Rahab. Her mind knew the truth, and her will acted on that truth. She showed her faith by her deeds, and once again, you can read about Rahab in the book of Joshua in the Old Testament, and if you read chapters two and six, you get the story of Rahab and the spies. Now, the whole idea of this whole business of becoming is that both Abraham and Rahab display faith that changes life's circumstances, and goes on to work for God. Now, what is the relevance of this? Well, the relevance of it is this, we all need examples from everyday life to show that even the most difficult challenge is achievable. Some time ago, in my ministry, I met a young man who was questioning and thinking about faith and the implications of faith. And he said these words to me, which has stayed with me since. He said, 'Don't tell me, show me, and the truth that something works will give me hope.' And surely, that's exactly what James is doing here. He's saying to his Jewish hearers, 'Do you look at Abraham in your scriptures? Do you look at Rahab? Two different people, totally different people, and yet what they have worked, their faith was translated into action.' And he's saying to them, 'This, you may think this is hard, you may think it is difficult, you may think it is a path that you could never tread. But you look at Abraham, and you look at Rahab, and you will see real examples of how faith and works work out.' And I would say, in conclusion of our study this evening, you know, you look at people like Gladys Aeward, or Wilson Carlyle, who was the founder of the Church Army, or General Booth, who was the founder of the Salvation Army. Look at Elizabeth Frye, a Quaker, and how she brought about prison reform. Look at Wilberforce, look at Shaftesbury, look at a myriad of people who say to you, and who say to me, that faith and works, the head and the heart, is more than possible through faith in Christ and the inward working of his Spirit in our lives. So I've broken up the study this afternoon into those four parts, because I thought, well, perhaps it will help us to understand just a little bit more clearly what this passage in James is trying to say. And perhaps it's saying, well, you know, faith on the move, yes, but we need a church on the move. And if we're going to have a church on the move, then we've got to have a real sense of belonging. And we've got to behave in a way that is honouring to God. And all the sorts of things that happen in a church that bring dishonour to God, I mean, that's just got to go. All the gossip and all the hard words and all these things, it's got to go. It's no place, it has no place in the body of Christ. And we've got to wear on our sleeve what we believe. It's no good saying, 'Ah, yes, Lord, I believe.' It's got to be translated into action. And let us together pray that we will become the kind of people God, in his love and his mercy, would have us be. Amen.
Thank you, George. I think there are a couple of extra typos I picked up in the notes, although George read them through, but I'm sure you made sense of them. I did try to correct the ones that George spotted, but obviously, some we didn't. So what do you think? Have you any questions to ask, John, uh, George, before we continue in our thoughts? Don't be afraid. Can I?
It's given us a lot to think about as a church.
Can you take your masks off, I can hear you?
It's given us a lot to think about as a church.
Yes, yes.
Where we go from now.
That's right. And that was, you know, I felt God asking us to do this quite early on, and it was in my plan. And I'd have quite liked to have done it as a sermon series, because I think we need a wider body of people to hear it. But if few and I can witness in the way that we've been challenged to, perhaps, that will help us on our way. Thank you, Theresa. It certainly is something as a whole church we need to consider. Well, you've heard the expression couch potato. So, what are the characteristics of a pew potato? Any thoughts? Do take your masks off to speak, I can't hear you. Bree's got the giggles now. It's true though, isn't it? How many people come and they'll sit and they'll go, and sometimes they don't even acknowledge another person, or anything like that. And we're not to judge why, there may be very good reasons why not. But I have yet to be in a church where we've asked for volunteers and had a queue out of the vestry door, waiting to do things. And there is a sense in which the outside world point the finger at us and say, 'You hypocrites, you say this and that, and you don't do it there.' We don't walk the talk. So each of us have got a challenge on. And maybe the way forward to meet that challenge is this week, to make a commitment to do a specific act of kindness, and then continue that once a week. Did you know that it takes three weeks to create a habit, a bad habit, and 12 weeks to get rid of a bad habit? But if you change one bad habit for one good habit, it will then eventually make all the difference. So I wonder, maybe today, you could make a commitment to doing one thing. Can you think of somebody or something you could do that you could write in there and say, 'I commit to do this this week', and see what happens? I'll leave you to ponder that one for a little while. And here's a really scary thing to do, if you want to do it. I don't want you to feel scared, but I just, when I went to a conference, it was the Global Leaders Conference, and we were told to commit to something, and we had a special card given to us, and we had to sign it and date it, and then we'd ask the person next to us, who knew us, hopefully, to sign it as well. And then we would be accountable to that person. And they'd ask them, I, I had Mary, my friend, next to me, and it felt quite safe. But boy, did she check up on me. Anyway, it's up to you. If you wanted to do that, you could do it. Or you could tell somebody, not in the church, what you're doing. But speaking it and saying you're going to do it does help you to be committed to doing whatever you feel God's calling you to do. Don't forget that he might put an idea in your head, and if he has, listen to it and do it. Now I wonder what characteristics would be obvious if you were doing good work, not for your own glory, but for God's? Has anybody got any ideas? Any thoughts about what this question is getting to? Well, I think perhaps the characteristic that would be obvious would be, not many people would know about it. There's nothing like trying to keep a straight face when somebody comes and tells me how good they've been and what they've done, as if to say a pat on the back, because we do these things for God, not for recognition within the people around us. And I think that's one of the ones. We do it quietly, humbly, peacefully, not looking for any recognition. And sometimes that can be hard, when you're slogging away, cleaning the brasses, week by week, and nobody says, 'Thank you for doing that', which is why every month I choose a group of people to say thank you to in our prayers on our pew news. Because, yes, it's good to say thank you, but it, those people don't do it for that thanks. We have to get the balance right. So there's lots to ponder. And tonight, I'm very conscious that we have even song in a minute, which Georgia, at six o'clock, which George is going to lead. So I think we'll call it today, so that we can have a little bit of a break and a little rest before even song at six. So let's pray and ask God to speak to us into our hearts now. And if you'd like to pray, or if you want to sing a song, please do. Father God, we thank you for the brothers and sisters you have given us in Christ. Help us to really understand what that means, that we are part of your family, loved by you equally, unconditionally, helped by you through our brothers and sisters. Help us to be aware of one another, and how we can support and help one another. Help us to be aware of what we do, what we say, how we say it, so that we can really build bonds of trust, faith, and love, and peace. So, Lord, hear our prayer, and be with us in the days that lie ahead. Lord, in your mercy, hear our prayer. Let's bless one another with our pair of blessing. The Lord bless us and keep us, and make his face to shine upon us. Help us to be a blessing to each other and our communities, that your ways may be known among us. Let all the people praise you, O God. Let all the people praise you. Amen. Thank you for joining us. Goodbye.